All right. Okay, hello. It is 5:02 PM on Monday, December 29th, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Bumpus, Vice President Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Edscorn, Director Whitfield, Superintendent Woodward, Student Representative Myron Robinson, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Student Rep Sophia Willett will not be in attendance with us this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda, which can be found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stop standing next to me. I like the height comparison. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any forms submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Okay, Agenda Item 1.04. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated December 9, 2024.
Is there a second? Second, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated December 9, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01, Board Reorganization. Per Board Policy 1210, this is the annual reorganization meeting. Elections are to be conducted in the following order. We have Board President, Board Vice President, President Pro Tem, WSSTA, WASDA Legislative Rep, WIAA Liaison, and the IMC Representative. Okay, so I will call for nominations for President to serve during the ensuing year. President will, oh, President will grab the gavel. And I now open nominations for the election of President of the Board for the coming year.
I'd like to make a nomination to, for Jen to serve one more years as President. I think that we've been working on a lot getting through with Sean, our, what do you call him? Our strategic plan, thank you. And we've been working on our Board Distinction as well. And I know that's been one big push for us. So for this one more year, I'd love for to see Jen serve as our President. So I'm gonna nominate you.
Any other nominations? Okay, if there are additional nominations, the President will repeat the process. Go ahead, Holly.
Okay. Director Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Yes.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, you got me one more year. And I think I'm supposed to do that part.
There you go.
All right.
Let it be so.
Call for nominations for Vice President to serve during the ensuing year. I now open nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board for the coming year. I'd like to like Jeremiah Campbell. Nominate. I'd like to nominate Jeremiah Campbell.
President Bumpus?
Yes.
Are there other nominees?
Oh. Are you fine?
Usually, okay. Are there any other nominations? I thought that was for, actually not thinking out loud, sorry. But I thought that was for when we do the budget. I'm, because that's written into the policy, yeah, that I have to ask three times for budgets.
Budgets, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so probably not this one.
You do ask for the second time if there's.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
If it's none, then we can move on.
Okay. My vote is yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Director Campbell?
Sure, yes.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congrats, Director Campbell. Okay, I'd like to call for, I'd like to call for nominations for President Pro Tem to serve during the ensuing year. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Director Barnes.
Any other nominations?
President Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Vice President Campbell?
Yes.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Barnes. I'd like to call for nominations for WASDA Legislative Rep to serve during the ensuing year. And now open nominations for the position of WASDA Legislative Rep of the Year, or of the Board for the coming year.
I'd like to nominate Director Barnes.
Are there any other nominations?
President Bumpus?
Absolutely.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Vice President Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Barnes. Okay, moving on to nominations for the WIAA Liaison to serve during the ensuing year. I now open nominations for the position of WIAA Liaison of the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Director Edscorn.
Any other nominations?
President Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Vice President Campbell?
Yes, we give you lots of responsibilities now.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
And Director Whitfield?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Edscorn. Okay, I'd like to call for nominations for IMC Representative to serve during the ensuing year. I now open nominations for the position of IMC Representative of the Board for the coming year.
I nominate Chuck Whitfield.
Any other nominations?
President Bumpus?
Yes.
Director Barnes?
Yes.
Vice President Campbell?
Yes.
Director Edscorn?
Yes.
And Director Whitfield?
Yes. I love the IMC.
Congratulations, Director Whitfield. Okay, and that is the end. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Monroe Arts Council Annual Report. We have Daniel Ramey from the Monroe Arts Council. It is, oh. We have Connie with the Monroe Arts Council, Vice President of Financials. Hi, Connie.
I'm afraid of my battery. Okay, well, it's that time of year. Thank you very much for having us here to report today. Thank you. Oh, much better. All right, so this is our summary report on all of our activities of the year. It's been an amazing year, and we're really excited to tell you about it. So, go ahead. Standard stuff, our mission statement. I think you've all seen this one before. And this is our current officers and board. And I just always have to stop here last couple of meetings and mention that we lost a board member, a longtime board member this year. You probably knew him, Jim Bloss, very active in the community. Pardon me? He passed away a couple of months ago, yeah. And so, we're, we've got a hole in our board, and it's been very sad for us. But anyway, go ahead, Jesse. So, highlights of this year. The big one that I know everybody wants to hear about is we did complete the framing phase of the construction project. And we used up that whole ARP grant. Thank God, that's over with. So, we, we'll talk about that some more later. We had a big fundraiser in June that was put on by one of our customers, one of the dance, Indian Dance Academies from Bothell, who has been a rental customer several times, and very, very nice people. And they put on this fundraiser specifically to help us raise money to buy more fabric, to reupholster more of the seats. We'll talk about that later, too. So, $7,400, that was very nice. And we did get 45 seats done so far, and we have a lot more fabric left to get through. Our community band put on three excellent concerts, all free to the public. Sky Performing Arts did three great musicals. We just finished Little Women. It was very well attended, and we got really good feedback from the public on that. Summer Drama Camp was very successful last year's, to the point where they had too many kids the first time we did it. And so, they separated it into two sessions. The first session was for ages six to 11, and the second one was for 12 to 17. And they had full enrollment for both of those. So, that was a big success. We gave $1,000 to graduating seniors for scholarships, and we've got some more things coming up. So, go ahead. Here's a fundraising summary, and I'm going to kind of qualify this because I showed you a similar chart last year that had very different numbers. I, I am displaying a little more information this time. Last year, the fundraising summary, I kind of limited it to donations and grants. This year, I thought there's no reason why we shouldn't be showing you kind of the whole income picture. So, Sky Performing Arts has been very successful in their ticket sales, and so that's reflected on there. And a portion of that comes to the MAC account. But we are all under the same tax ID, so I thought it was appropriate to show you the whole picture. So, we had, we had some good grant activity, great donations. Our rental income went up by about $3,000 for the year, $3,500, I think, over last year. Sky Performing Arts did booming business with ticket sales. And the donations and concessions, those are from the Monroe Community Band. And then, we had some miscellaneous concessions from the MAC for various events that we were attending. So, that was our, that's our total income for the year. I'm not giving you a complete financial report here. We also have, you know, about that much in expenses, too. We're a nonprofit, so that's the way it works. So, go ahead, Jesse. By the numbers, 26 public and private events, 167 days of total usage. And I think that's a conservative figure. I think there was actually more than that in terms of days when our volunteers were just in there working on the theater, you know, fine tuning the sound system and that sort of thing. 125 volunteer hours is, this was our upholstery project. We'll talk about that some more later. And then, just general volunteer hours. We have two members in particular who are our tech experts, who are in that theater, working on lighting, working on sound, working on everything to do with the theater. And they are in there multiple days a week. They've just done amazing work. Next slide. Oh. Got to get the animation to work, Jesse. There we go, okay. The slow motion credit roll here. This is the list of all the performances that were held in the theater this year. It was a big, busy year. And I tried to fit it all on one slide, and it was just too much to read. So, I thought I would just do a little drama there. Next slide. These were the three concerts presented by the band. We had our Christmas concert, Spring Concert, All Creatures Great and Small, and then Pirates and Sea Songs in June. And we have another one coming up on the 14th. So, you want to come to that? That's a week from Saturday? No, this coming Saturday at 2:00. Next slide. And these were the three musicals that were put on by Sky Performing Arts, and they were all amazing. They were, really, they're just getting better every time. Next slide. Okay, and Summer Drama Camp. We had Esop's Fables was the, the performance that was put on by the younger kids. And then, the older kids did Game of Tiaras. And so, Summer Drama Summer Camp is, it's a week-long workshop, and the kids learn everything to do with theater. They learn about doing costumes, they build sets. They, of course, do their rehearsals, and they learn how to work as teams. It's really a good, all-around education for the kids, and they love it. And we do offer, nobody has taken us up on it yet, but we really want this to be available to anybody who wants to participate. And we recognize that, you know, the program fee, I think it was $250 for the week this year, and not everybody can afford that. So, we have offered to chip in with scholarships for, we, you know, handed out forms to those who just can't afford it. No one's taken it up on it yet, but the offer stands. Next slide. Okay, so, we did our scholarships. I think I mentioned that. Swift Night Out, every year we do this, and every year, it's wonderful. Larry Schwitters got to give his lecture on the, on the swift migration patterns in the theater. We always make the theater available to Swift Night Out, to the Pilchuck Audubon Society, free of charge. It's just a longstanding partnership we've had with them. Movies Under the Moon, we did our usual posters, and we even printed up t-shirts and sold a few. Downtown Trick or Treat, that was a lot of fun. We gave away hundreds of coloring sheets, crayon packets, and candy, of course. And then, we also use this to advertise our upcoming events. So, we had nice little leaflets for the grownups. And a new thing this year, we've been starting to work with the Ward F. Roney Jr. VFW Art Gallery on Main Street. They're having a little trouble getting traffic into their gallery. So, we've met with them a couple of times, and we're trying to brainstorm ideas to help them with that. Okay, so now, let's talk about the renovation. So, this is what it looks like now. We realize it is not beautiful. The funding that we had only covered the framing. And so, we had hoped originally that the grant would cover both the framing and the rough-in plumbing. But for reasons that I think I have covered in previous meetings, that did not work out. So, we had to combine this into one grant, and we went into competitive bid. And our winning bidder bid just about every penny we had in the grant. In fact, maybe slightly more. So, we spent the entire grant, and then another almost $11,000 came out of the MAC's account to finish that job. But it is all closed out. And we are now looking for funding for the remainder of the job. So, I think that's it. Go ahead, Jesse. Okay, so, for future funding prospects, kind of exciting news was, in August, we had our two representatives, district representatives, come and tour the theater. And they were really impressed. They had never been in there before. They had no idea that Monroe had anything like that, and they were just going, whoa. So, they seemed very, very interested in helping us with capital funding. And as a matter of fact, I just got an email from Representative Steele's office today with information about how to apply. So, we're going to be starting that process. I think the deadline is like, end of January. Anyway, so, we have, we have what we need to go forward with an application for that. And that, a lot of things have to fall into place for that funding to come through. But if it does come through, it could be really significant. So, fingers crossed. And then, in the meantime, because we know that that funding process with the state will take a long time, and we're trying to get things done before our permit expires, so we don't have to go through that process again. So, we are approaching the MJ Murdoch Trust to see if they can help us out with this. Their process is, first, you send a letter of inquiry. You briefly describe your project, and they write back and tell you whether they're interested in working with you or not. And they did write back and invite us to submit a full application. So, we're going to do that. And as you see on the chart, the maximum request allowed is $350. That is not enough to finish this project. But it's enough to get us a long way down the road while we're waiting to see if the state funding gets through. So, that's where we're at with the construction project. Then, going back to the fundraiser, just talk about that a little bit more, back in June. That was pretty exciting because the people who organized it arranged for the Consul General of India to attend from the Seattle office. And Mayor Thomas came as well, and Carolyn Slick, some city council members. And both the Consul General and Mayor Thomas gave some wonderful speeches during the intermission. They just, they were amazing. It was really quite a smashing success. A lot of beautiful dancing. We also had dancers come in from Granite Falls School of Dance. So, it was sort of an East and West dance celebration. And the money, as I said before, was enough to buy an additional 100 yards of upholstery fabric. And there's just a shot from that event. So, it's really a beautiful thing to watch these dancers, and their costumes are amazing. Okay, the seating project. So, this has been fun. This is, we talked about this a couple of years ago, that we wanted to do this, and it actually happened this year. So, we're pretty excited about it. Rotary Club came in for our first workshop, and we set up an assembly line on the stage. John Holmes from Monroe Upholstery came in, brought his big pneumatic stapler, and set up a work table. And we just had this assembly line of people removing seats from the aisles, bringing them up on the stage, stripping off the fabric. John would put the new fabric on, reassemble, back down, and reinstall. And so, in one day, we did the whole front row. And that was about a total of maybe five hours of work. But, you know, so many people chipping in. Rotary Club was just amazing. And then, a few weeks later, we did another one with a smaller group, and we did another 21 seats. That was just our MAC volunteers and some friends and family. And, boy, do we get things done. It's really starting to look a lot better in there. Okay. Yep, and there's the pictures of the finished project. So, the one on the left, that was the first workshop, that whole front row finished. And I wish I had before pictures from a few years ago when it was all duct tape and mismatched fabrics. And, you know, we, we used to have prospective clients come to tour the theater to see if they wanted to rent. And, you know, we'd watch their faces. And sometimes, you'd get them up on the stage, and they'd be looking out the theater, and they'd look down at that front row, and you could just see their faces fall because it looked pretty shabby, but it looks great now. And then, we did the, yeah, the center section, the next two rows. And I spoke at Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago, and we reviewed how this turned out. And they said, when's the next one? We want to do it again. So, they're on board. So, the other initiative that we had mentioned last year, I think, as a sort of an aspirational goal, was to do something about the drapery on the stage. It is really, really, truly horrible. It's, I mean, the pictures don't even really show how bad it is. These drapes are 50 years old, and they are torn and patched, and patched again. And that little patch you see over on the right side of the screen where it looks all thin and washed out, it is threadbare. And when I was visiting the Road, the Ward Roney Art Gallery recently, there was a little girl in there from Duval who had taken part in one of the musicals. And I got talking with these folks, and I mentioned that we were working on this. And this little girl says, thank you! I could see through the drapes! So, I think people, people are kind of excited about this. So, one more slide, I think that's the last one. So, this is what we're proposing to do. And I am now almost finished with a T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application. We have a quote from Theater Supply Company down in Renton. And we've been working closely with them for quite a while now. So, this is what we're proposing to do, basically replacing everything that we have now, which is the red drapes in the front and the rear drape in the back. The one thing we don't have now that will make a huge difference if we're successful with this grant is the center section, the border and the two legs, they call them. So, those little drapes that, that sort of mask the wings will make a huge difference in the way the stage looks from the theater, or from the seating in the house. Because now, if you've been in there, you probably know that there's a lot of clutter back there and things you can see on the walls that shouldn't be able to see as an audience member. And that should go away once that border and the legs are in place. At one time, I have heard that we did have those in the theater. And people who are associated with Sky Performing Arts have told me, yeah, one day, we went there and they were just gone. We don't know where they went or who took them. And that was many, many years ago. So, one of the fun things about this drapery project, I had to collect some letters of support for the grant application. And it happened that, a few years ago, we had a really generous donation from a Dr. Charles Strube, or Streube, I'm not sure how he pronounces his name, Streube. You know, well, Charles Streube participated in a fundraiser with his barbershop quartet in the 70s to replace the original drapes in the theater, which had worn out. And so, the drapes we have now are Charles Streube's drapes from the 1970s. That's how I know how old they are because I called him up and said, would you like to write us a letter of support and tell him that, you know, 50 years ago, you raised money for the last set of drapes? So, he did that. And I thought that was a nice touch for him to be able to demonstrate how much love this community has for this old theater. So, I think that's about it. Just want to say thank you to Adam, Joan, and Stacy. They've been fantastic to work with and very, very supportive, and we really appreciate it. So, does anybody have any questions?
Are you an actor or musician in any of all of this?
No.
Oh, you're not? Just have a love for the arts?
Yeah, I, I just, well, I kind of fell into this group through my work. My employer was on the board several years ago. And so, I ended up joining them. And I, I've always been fascinated by the building since the first time I drove past it in 2001. And so, yeah, it's just kind of stuck around, so.
Do you keep track of attendance?
Pardon me?
Do you keep track of attendance?
Oh, at, at our events?
Yeah.
Well, I know Sky Performing Arts definitely does because those are ticketed events. So, they can tell you exactly how many people attended. Well, I know Sky Performing Arts definitely does because those are ticketed events. So they can tell you exactly how many people attended. We, we can estimate, so like the. The private events, like the, the dance recitals that are attended by friends and family. So we don't run ticketing on that. So we don't have exact headcount figures. But we, we can estimate pretty well and we can get that information from those organizations. So is that something that you guys would be interested in having?
I'd be interested, just to know the amount of activity and to see how they're. Supported by the community.
I can, I can see if I can get that for you.
Okay.
I know. These, the Indian Dance Schools drive just huge audience attendance. There was one event in particular, it was sort of a. It was like a professional women's recognition organization and it went on, or event. And it went on all day long in groups. And so we had groups cycling throughout the theater. You know, for an hour, an hour at a time, all day long. And. Craig estimated that we probably had 1,100 people pass through the theater that day. So we know that these events are drawing over the course of a year, thousands of visits. And a lot of them are from outside of Monroe. So. Any other questions?
I just want to thank you and the rest of MAC for all of the love and hard work that you are pouring into George Wagner Center. To bring it, you know, back to life and rehab the inside of it. When I went there to help recover some of the seats, the work that you've done inside was just incredible. And you make it fun, recovering seats, new recovering seats. I'm looking forward to doing it again, but it's just, it's been incredible to see because it is such a huge part of our community and our history. And so I'm just very thankful for all the work that you and MAC are doing on that.
Well, we're grateful to have a venue like this and have access to it and be able to use it. So, you know, we're, we're happy to do the work. And good for you. You said George Wagner, not Frank Wagner. You're right. All right, anything else?
How many more faces are there? And how much more is, yeah.
I should have included that chart. I'm sorry, I did not. So I actually do have that information. I could, yeah, I don't know if I have enough battery power to even transfer it, but I can tell you the numbers roughly. So. We had the contractor that did the framing work, we asked him to estimate loosely what the rest of the job was. We did ask him to estimate on the high side because we have to account for the likelihood that we'd have to pay prevailing wage. And we can't afford to be caught short. And so, so he went through. So the next things are going to be rough-in plumbing, electrical. Insulation and drywall. Finishing, there's. You know, the usual flooring, there's, and these are all broken down. And I'd be happy to send you guys the chart. I have all the information all ready to go. The total figure that we estimate. It, it kind of shocked me, but. They're talking like on the order of over $800,000. Yeah. So, yeah, far more than anyone, you know, 12 years ago when we went into this as an organization. Nobody had any idea. They were looking at a project of this magnitude. So it's turned into a pretty big deal. So, um. Yeah, I've got a nice fact sheet and a budget breakdown. If anybody would like to have that, I can furnish that.
Yeah, I would, I would love that. Thank you for sharing. I, I know, I imagine now I'm like, is it floorless without plumbing and no walls? Like I, I haven't been there in a while.
Yeah, so the picture I showed you only shows what you see in the public areas in the hallway. And so behind the plywood door in that, I don't know, Jesse, maybe you can scroll back to that image. There we go. Passed it. There we go. So the, behind the, the temporary door, all the framing is in place for where the restroom stalls are going to be. So on the west end, it'll be the ladies' room. And then there is a section between the ladies' room and the lobby, which is going to be the concessions kitchen. And then on the east end, there will be a ticket office. And oh, I didn't show, oh, I forgot to include a picture for you. We saved the original ticket window from 1939. Yeah, and we reinstalled it. So it's in the lobby now. It's not trimmed or anything. It doesn't look pretty yet, but it's going to look really cool when we're done. So, so that's our, so we're going to have a little ticket office and just general purpose office. And then the men's room on the other side. And then the very far corner of that space. There's a little funny. Cutout area that was actually where the original single toilet for the bathrooms was installed back in 1939. I have no idea why they only put one toilet in a 700-seat theater, but that's what they did, one toilet in each restroom. So that's being converted to a janitor's closet. So it'll be easier for us to have water and clean things. Because it's really awkward right now to, to do any cleaning in there. Because the only water source is the little bathroom out in the hallway. And it's quite a hike. So.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'd love to just learn more about how I can support personally, but also as a board. And it sounds like we're serving lots, or you're serving thousands of visitors there through some of the programming.
Really are. We, you know, and, and our president and also theater manager Craig Burkhead. I can't say enough about what a great job he does. He takes care of everything from the initial customer contact to setting up the contracts. To arranging pricing, getting the customer in there, walking them through, find out what they need for technical support. Make it happen during the performance. I mean, he just has moved mountains in there and people are really responding well to it. And because he's been able to enhance what we can offer so much, we've been able to raise our prices significantly this year. And that's been a big help to the bottom line.
That's awesome. In addition to Director Whitfield's request, I'd also be curious how many families of Monroe or Monroe students we serve or attend. Because it is right there in the heart of Monroe and, and it's a school. So I'd be curious what those numbers look like as well.
We'll see what we can come up with. It's, it's been challenging to capture that zip code data for attendees. Sometimes it's really easy if you have a ticketed event, like Sky Performing Arts can do it in a heartbeat because they just, you know, download the data. But when you have events that are free, like the band concerts. I think we can assume that most of those people are from Monroe, but we also have visitors that come from out of town. And you just don't know because that's not being measured in any way. And we're always talking about ways to try to capture that information, but.
Absolutely.
Haven't quite succeeded yet.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much. You, this is, you clearly do a lot of work. And you obviously have a very big heart for, heart for this work. So thank you for all that you do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, agenda item 4.01, we have staff recognition employees of the month for November. The Monroe School District Honor Role Recognition Program is aimed at recognizing employees for exemplifying our core values through their service to our students. Staff, families and community. Congratulations to the 40 exceptional staff members nominated in November for their outstanding service to our students, families and community. Please join us in congratulating our November Employees of the Month.
I get the extreme honor and privilege of presenting the Classified Employee of the Month, Dean Adams. Who is here with us tonight. Dean, come on up.
Yes, of course. Dean is our custodian at Sky Valley Education Center. And not only does he serve the over 800 students that we have there, but he serves their families. Which includes toddlers, babies, parents and all of the staff that we have. So it really is quite a big job. And something extraordinary happened this time. We actually got 12 nominations for Dean, which is the most that has been received for any. Employee that has been nominated. And so I'm going to read every single one of those 12 nominations here tonight, Dean. So number one. This person has worked at Sky Valley for a while and they say, we all love Dean. He does, he does his job so good. OMG. I'm begging you to hear me out when I say we all love Dean and you will too. He's the GOAT. He is always hardworking and kind and does his job very well. I always see him hard at work and he's very friendly. I would say Dean actually shows all of these at an amazing level. He is always super friendly and easy to talk to, along with doing an amazing job keeping our school looking orderly. Custodial staff doesn't get nearly enough recognition for all the work they do. And I, along with several other students, all agree he deserves this award. Number six, Dean is the best custodian we never asked for, but he is great at keeping the school floating. He helps with pretty much everything and is a fun guy to be around. Number seven, Dean works incredibly hard to create a clean environment for our families. He does this work with kindness and ingenuity. He welcomes all, encourages questions and helps us understand our building better. Number eight, Dean has been with the Monroe School District for a long time. I had the pleasure of working with him with, when I was a custodian for the district. He's a terrific worker and a wonderful human being. When my sister-in-law told me about the MSD Employee Honor Roll and mentioned that Dean had not been on it before. I told her that I would be happy to nominate him. He deserves to be recognized for his hard work and his dedication. Number nine, Dean has served our community for a number of years now. And he has always done so with the utmost care and compassion. Whether he's retrieving balls from the school roof, my kids might be guilty of one of those. Or cleaning the facilities, you can always expect to see him doing so in a professional way and with a smile on his face. He has a hard work ethic and perhaps more importantly, a big heart. I feel so privileged to have him in our community. Number 10, Dean works very hard to make our school a better place. Dean's a genuinely awesome guy who really makes you feel like you're part of the community. Number 11, Dean is so much more than a custodian. He meets and exceeds the needs and wants of our staff and our families. He is kind, fun, flexible, available and consistent. We love him at Sky Valley and we would love to see him be acknowledged for who he is and what he does. Thanks for your consideration. Number 12, Dean is in a place where he doesn't just serve staff and students. He also interacts with and serves hundreds of parents, grandparents, preschool and toddler age students and babies. He is always here for us, always willing to work extra long hours if we are down a person. Always willing to cover our events and always thinks about our school and our needs. He could work at any school, places with new or remodeled facilities, indoor facilities. Or he could have retired long ago, but he is always here for us and he cares about our school. Dean, thank you for modeling excellence and integrity and for making Sky Valley such a wonderful place to be. We truly appreciate you and all that you've done.
We've got some gems in our school district. I get the honor of being able to share our certificated employee of the month. Who is a former coworker and team member with my wife on her team. The Kinder Team at Chain Lake Elementary, Mrs. Ginger Donahue. This is definitely from a parent who names their child a bunch of times. So I just. Mrs. Donahue was going to know exactly who this is from, but it encapsulates who she is. And when I saw her nominated, I was, I thought, yes, she's extremely deserving. The parent says, I wish I could pick all of them. Mrs. D has exceeded our expectations since having Romeo in her class this school year. I've never known a teacher so caring, compassionate and committed to these children. She certainly made Romeo and his classmates feel welcomed and that they belong. After parent-teacher conferences, we received a postcard personalized to our family. And the smile on Romeo's face as we read it out loud was priceless. Mrs. D has kept us all up to date on what they're focusing on in class. And giving all of the children aims to become top bananas. That just means that you have mastered all of your letters. I want you all to understand this. I was informed when my wife was on that Kinder Team as well. It's a big deal to make top banana, just to let you know. And the master ball words as well. Those are your high-frequency words. You get different ball levels. It has really given the kids motivation to learn. Romeo also came home with all little booklets of each letter of the alphabet. Which they were focusing on in school, which we would continue on at home and also reading booklets. Romeo's kindergarten class also went on a field trip to the pumpkin patch this year. Where all the kids picked their, picked out their own pumpkins to bring home. Of course Romeo picked a big one and he was unable to bring it home on the bus. And you know what Mrs. D did? She went out of her way to drop off the pumpkin at our house just so that Romeo could have it over the weekend and carve it. She has always been so welcoming and a pleasure to talk to when we see her. And Ginger has always been an individual and I still have a student, our daughter attends Chain Lake still. And she goes out of her way to be very welcoming to our daughter, to asking about my wife. And she's not just someone who cares about her students, which she does. And she's done for many years and done it with excellence, but she cares about her coworkers. And I think a lot of times we think about the kids, which they're important. That's what we're here for. But when you, when you remember your coworkers as well, everybody wins. And that is something that she does. She leads with excellence as a veteran teacher. And I love seeing that. And I'm so excited that we have teachers of that caliber. Personally, selfishly, at my, at my daughter's school, even though she was never my daughter's teacher. But in our school district, I know that they are peppered throughout all of our buildings. And I am very excited to see that she received this. So very deserving teacher.
Thank you. Those are amazing. I got a little teary-eyed with, with both those. Those are awesome. So good to, to let people know that we appreciate them. So important, yeah. Okay, agenda item 4.02, student representative. And we have Myron Robinson.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. So as you guys know, today there was a small unfortunate fire at the high school today. A lot of people, a lot of kids were happy. So I guess that's a good thing. Saturday, the boys and girls team played Stanwood. The boys beat Stanwood 71 to 49. The girls unfortunately lost in overtime with a score of 39 to 52. And the MHS High School Band has a holiday concert tomorrow. The, sorry, that's December 10th at 7:00 PM in the gym. And Key Club's winter meeting is Tuesday, December 10th after school in room 301. And that's all I have for you guys.
What'd you, what'd you spend your day doing?
Um, after I went home, I went to McDonald's and I was playing my Playstation for most of the day.
Yeah.
Myron, I just appreciate your honesty and all of that. Because I know, but you were able to get home right away, weren't you? Right away. Yeah, I, and you're, you're one of the lucky ones. I heard that a lot of students got like stuck on the buses. And then they went to Park Place and then they had like all the students at Park Place. And then they finally got home. So I'm glad that you were one of the lucky ones. Yeah, we, I remember my son was texting me this morning. He's like, there's a fire at the high school. I go, no, there's not. Like, come on. And then we got, we're like, oh my gosh, it really is. So.
Yeah, I was actually unable to get even into the school parking lot because there were so many cars trying to go up the hill. So luckily I didn't get there and had to leave automatically. Luckily I was still like outside. But it was still unfortunate to get there and then have to leave.
Yeah, my, my son said he wasted an outfit. So he's, you know, he's a stylish guy. Director Campbell told him to fold it up. No one saw it but me. It's okay. I'll try again tomorrow. Thank you, Myron. Okay, agenda item 4.03, no public comment. Okay, moving on to business, we have agenda item 5.01, consideration of changing the Monroe High School schedule. Is there a motion to change the Monroe High School schedule to six periods a day?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors change the, or. Vote on changing the Monroe High School schedule to six-period schedule over eight-period block.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I just want to start off by thanking those in our district.
I just want to start off by thanking those in our district office who have worked tirelessly to provide us with facts and information. The staff at Monroe Schools, the high school, for being so involved and providing us also with facts and information. I know that that takes a lot of extra time out of things that you're already doing. I just really appreciate you being involved in the process and walking with us through this. I also really appreciate the families that are involved and have given their opinions. I appreciate every single one of the students who have come forward, done the things that they've done to make sure that voices are heard so that we can make the best informed decision possible with all the facts. This is not an easy decision by any means. This is incredibly hard, because no matter what we do, we know that there are people who are not going to be happy, people that like it one way over the other. But I truly believe that every single one of us up here is here because we care about students. We care about our staff and we want what is best for that. And so in light of everything that's, that's happened, that is where I will be making my decision from this evening. And I just kind of wanted to share a piece of that with everyone so that you know. I, I've struggled with this a lot over the last two weeks. I've gone back and forth. I've had so many conversations, spoken with dozens of people out in public. Thank you to those of you who have indulged me when I've asked you and given me your honest feedback. So yeah, I, I go forward with, with that in mind.
I just want to add to that. I also want to thank Hallie Pickens, who's a 12th grader ASP president. She sent us a survey, which I assume she conducted or at least initiated, of the staff and students and compiled it into a spreadsheet for us. So thank you very much. I read through most of, all of the comments, and I definitely appreciate that data set.
I wanted to share, I didn't share my opinion in the last meeting. And I've, part of it, I've, I've vacillated back and forth on just my own opinions of this and lots of notes, lots of data, lots of emails from the community, from parents, from Hallie and other students as well. I even had conversation with a parent of multiple students in the district. And then my son, who obviously was hanging out with us for the day because of the school fire, you know, he overheard my comments, and he's like, "Dad," and he really wants, he's like, "You need to do this." I'm like, "Yes, my entire decision is based on the fact that my 16-year-old is telling me what I should do." But it was interesting because even in that conversation, you know, this, this parent who has multiple kids at the school and even my son, like, there's just differences. And I understand and recognize that no matter what decision we choose, whether it's to stay or it's to change, it is, it is good and bad for different people in the, in our school. And it, and it really does feel kind of like it is a very split thing. And so for me, the data was really important, looking at testing data, looking at minutes in classroom, looking at success rates, looking at the ability of other districts who are on six-period days, who are still able to make the accommodations. But the biggest one for me also is, and this has always been something that's been very important for me, and Brenda will know this, I'm always asking about financial questions that, the, the financial savings on this, when we are already running a deficit model, that, I struggle with that. I struggle saying, you know, knowing, even though it's in ratio, it's a, it's a relatively small percentage of our annual budget, it's still a lot of money. And when we're running, and that's roughly around where our shortage is, to say if we can make this adjustment and still make accommodations for students, there are flexible things that we can do in order to make sure that we are offering all of the different needs for our students. And yes, it may limit it, but it doesn't mean we can't offer everything. It just may mean that our students can't all do all the things all of the time. And, and that is a hard thing. But if that means so that we can have a greater amount of success, that we can continue to help our students in general continue to be successful for college work and life, whatever they choose to do after high school, which is our prime directive with our students, to prepare them for that. The, and it also provides a financial savings, not either or. For me, I've, I've had to start to lean to this six-period day, and I have gone back and forth on that. And so that's my, that's why my leaning is really the, the, the testing data issues, the attendance issues, the minutes in classroom issues, and the financial thing, especially because of the deficit model. Those things for me, I just, I can't ignore those.
Has there been more discussion on a zero-period or how students can make up a class if needed, if we do move to a six-period day?
Uh, yeah, so, and I was gonna speak to this in my update, but I'll just do it now. This is good. So what we're looking at right now is, we already offer jazz band as a zero-period, but we're looking at maybe putting that back into the school day and offering general band outside. Looking at maybe a seventh-period drama class as, right now, students are already there practicing drama anyhow after school, looking at that, looking at offering, right now we offer, because of the eight-period day, we're afforded the luxury of offering a credit recovery every, every year during the school year. We're looking at maybe putting that during zero-period as well, so students can still get credit recovery during the school year versus the summer. But we will offer that option as well in the summer. And I'll speak a little bit more about that during my update. So, 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 so obviously there hasn't been a, a ton outside of that, that. I mean, this is where, I mean, starting, well, three weeks ago, I met with, with the high school team and said, hey, it's feeling like it could go in this direction, so they've been working pretty hard since then to look at different options. And then this past week after the workshop, when James had asked for the straw, the straw poll. But what, what I was planning on doing every board meeting, I'll give you an update if you end up voting this way. Because we have to have it all figured out between now and the end of February anyhow. And then we can massage it as we go every year or two. But it's to be seen, but for sure, definitely some of the general electives for sure, just not sure how many.
Yeah, I appreciated all of the work that the committee had, I think for how, a year? I don't, for a long time. Yeah, almost a year. Okay, so really a long time, all of the work that went into it. And then last week was super helpful as well, just to recognize that there are options for students when it comes to electives for me personally. And then I had a high schooler stay home today, and that kind of brought it home for me too. He missed a full day of learning today, which means that it was maybe an A-day, I don't know, B-day. So that means he's missing that learning today. So he's having to catch up on his, and he's, he has taken a challenging schedule, so he has geometry, Spanish too. He needs to have that learning happen. And it would be helpful to know that he could make that up tomorrow, but he won't actually be able to go to it until Wednesday. So that kind of brought it home for me today. Yeah, so Friday was the last time he was in that class. He won't see teachers again until Wednesday. That's a lot of missed learning. Okay, there is a motion on the table. Is it discussion? Any other questions? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and repeat it. I wrote it out kind of. Okay, uh, there is a motion at the Monroe School District Board of Directors, change the Monroe High School schedule to six-period day, six periods a day. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 6.6.06, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated December 9, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in the second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in consent agenda dated December 9, 2024. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Agenda item 7.01, Superintendent Update. Superintendent Woodward.
All right, so just as important as the zero-period that James brought up is also the credit equivalency piece was brought up at the last work session. And Shannon is working with some of the CTE team members to start increasing the number of course equivalences, course equivalencies we have. That will be taking more advantage of than zero-period and the seventh-period for sure. So basically, as a reminder, that's just freeing up space in the schedule by taking a, an equivalent CTE course that instead of taking your regular math, you might go take two CTE courses, get credit for mathematics for one, and then explore another CTE course or another elective for another. So more to come there. We are, excuse me, we're gonna continue offering credit recovery next school year as well. Again, we'll do that likely a zero or seventh period. We're gonna, I wouldn't say pilot, we'll try out a credit recovery program this summer and, and get our feet wet. Not, I think it was, Brenda, was it true when we ran a, a regular six-period day, was there a credit recovery in the summer here? Yeah, so we'll go back to that. There's some experience in the, in the district with, with that as well. But most districts is doing a quick 60-minute scan over, over the last couple of weeks. You, you really can't find a district in this area that doesn't run a, a credit recovery option in the summer. So most of them are right when school gets out, it's four weeks or so, and it's for students that are credit deficient. But there's also districts that run acceleration programs as well, which we can look at. Students who want to take a math course in the summer or, or whatever that might be. So not just for recovery, but for acceleration. Tuition is usually required. We would likely do the same. Again, we'll bring this back to the board. But it's often on a sliding scale depending on free and reduced lunch status. And we're gonna, we'll go ahead and plan on budgeting for a summer school moving forward with some of the cost savings that we realize from this movement from a block to a six-period day. Uh, so more to come. Two weeks from now, I'll give you another update on, on, on that. I wanted to thank Christine Hillstead. She's our Motley Elementary Principal. As you know, she is leading our pilot program for UFLY. I've brought that up here before. That's at University of Florida Literacy Institute Foundations Program. Jen Murphy noted, noted that Christine had a real passion for early literacy, and asked her she wanted to facilitate the pilot for our K2 teachers. And of course, we are thrilled that, thrilled that she accepted that. I think she's on meeting number two by now. Meeting number three, which is awesome. So again, this is one of our strategies to improve learning in the area of literacy, to make sure that our instructional materials are aligned with what we know about the science of reading. Um, I think, is it 20 classrooms? I should have asked you before this, involved? Okay, great. So I'm gonna read this, the stated goal of the pilot. This is to explore the instructional resource UFLY and its impact on foundational reading skill development for K2 students. Our theory is that systematic and explicit phonics instruction will lead to increased reading fluency, accuracy, and ultimately stronger comprehension compared, it's a pilot, to those students who are not receiving explicit phonics instruction. So, so the next step, once this, you know, the teachers will implement it, Jen will be back up front with, with y'all to talk about how did our students do? If it goes well, we will look at expanding that district, district-wide. And we'll make sure to get Christine here to do a presentation as well at some point. Uh, so word travels fast when there's a fire at a school. So by the time I texted you, which is probably 17 minutes or so after it, it started, some of you already had kids at the schools, so you knew. It was noticed actually about 7:00 AM by, by Cory, one of our maintenance guys, and, and April, our, our head custodian there. You, I think I mentioned in my text this morning that it originated in a lighting fixture, and thankfully it happened when it did and not Sunday afternoon or in the evening, or even when the commons was filled with students. So we really got very lucky with that. Like I said, Cory and April noticed the smoke and probably could smell it and see it. They were able to pull the fire alarm before the smoke sensors even recognized that something was going on. So that was very fortunate. We do have some video. We should share at some point, Adam and Kelly, I would think, of, of Brett, our principal, and Cory trying to get things under control. And I think it was Brett's first time to ever use a fire extinguisher. So while we would like people to evacuate and get out of the buildings, they could see that it was contained in one spot and did, did, did do some help. I don't think they're gonna be getting hired anytime soon by the Monroe Fire Department, but they did a great job. I want to thank Erin too, for your quick communication out to families. Because really, it was 7:02 or so when it starts, and by 7:30, there was already communication going out to families. Myron, you mentioned the buses. This is always a really tough call for me. And I always have to own it good or bad when it comes to canceling school or sending kids home, et cetera. I was in a district once where something similar happened, and we kept the students on the buses. And it was, and by then, parents, and this is middle school, so it was a little different, worried about sending kids home. I made the wrong call that, that time, and we were afraid to send kids home, and they were on the buses for almost three hours. And so this time, that was going through my head as I'm talking to Erin this morning. And knowing that there was a fire, smelled really bad in that building. We might have gotten away with a two-hour late start today, but we really just don't know. We have to let the fire department do their job. But we just do the best we can in a, in a fairly quick period of time. We did have after-school activities and sports today at the high school, so it was good. And tomorrow will be, I think, right, Adam, all, all good to go. If you want to, after the meeting, he has a six-foot lighting fixture in the back of his pickup. You can see, see what's going on with that as well. So I just want to thank our staff and our quick-acting people that were there, and it could have been a lot worse. So thanks, thanks to everyone. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to agenda item 8.01, we have board reports and/or comments.
I did want to say thank you to Superintendent Woodward for being really responsive. I know that you try really hard to keep the board looped in on things. I think it is hard to stay ahead of Facebook and Snapchat, because I was talking to my son, like, Superintendent hasn't, hasn't messaged me. I'm not sure there's really a fire. You know, you just don't want to go to school. And then we were in the line, and even the staff, like, my son's advisor was, we were, we were in that big line too, going up to the highway after the, the roundabout and realizing, okay, something really is going on. Because we're on the way there on the highway, and I'm like, there's no smoke. I'm thinking a big fire, right? And, and then we're in line, and there was even staff like telling cars along the way, hey, we're gonna cancel school. Go ahead and, and go home. And how fast, and by the time I even got to the house, I got, I got your text message, and then right after that, Erin had the, the message out. And so less than a half an hour after an incident is spotted, that's pretty impressive. And, and I think a lot of families, I don't know that there were a lot of students super disappointed about the day. But just really thankful for our team and our, and our, and our staff. Adam, I don't, I think that taking burnt light ballasts in the back of your pickup truck is under, and other duties as they need, being, you know, needed in your, in your job description. But thank you for you and your team as well, like making sure that, and, and to the fire department as well. Keeping our students safe is, is of the highest priority to us. And so I appreciate you making the call that you did. I know that it's hard. But at the, at the end of the day, we'd rather have our students safe. And that was a huge deal to make sure that, is this an issue with other light ballasts and different things? You know, that was going through my head of like, okay, they need to make sure that this isn't gonna happen with another thing in the electrical. And so making, taking the time to, to, to make sure that the building is safe was a big deal. So I appreciate that. I know it's a hard call. And, you know, I know that you've mentioned as well that we have the opportunity to appeal to the state to say, hey, is this something we need to, you know, make up because of an emergency situation? And so looking into that as well, I just want to say, as a dad of a kid at that building, I appreciate the, the care that went into that and how fast the team really did react. So thank you.
Okay, once again, we're gonna recognize some students here. I've got, I, I made sure to take some, some screenshots here. So, and hopefully I pronounce all of these names right, but we have some amazing student athletes. And I'm gonna be recognizing those who received first and second-team league honors. So first, we have girls' soccer. We have first-team Sydney Garner, who's a forward, Kinsey Mann, who's midfielder, and Sophie Imbo, who's a defender. And for second-team, we have Addison Williams, who's a forward, Hallie Keller, who's a defender, and Madeline Schwartz, who's midfielder. So congratulations, ladies, on those well-deserved honors. We also have girls' volleyball. We have three members of the team, Shanara Peebles, Maddie Walker, and Lexi Walker, who made first-team in Wesco League. Congratulations to all three of them. It was a joy. It was a joy to go and watch these females play, both in girls' soccer and in volleyball. They're incredible athletes. And then we also have for cross-country, we have first and second-team. So first-team is Owen Egan Heffernan and Seth Wood. So first-team is Owen Egan Heffernan and Seth Wood. And then for second-team, we have Austin McCrone. So congratulations to you three gentlemen. We also have for tennis, first-team for doubles, Miles Baumchin and Jacob Schaefer. So congratulations to you. And then last but not least, we have, oh, no, we still have swim and dive and then football. So swim and dive, we have first-team Madeline Clark, who was a dive. And then we have the 200 medley relay, which was Sabrina Cody, October Sealing, Emerson Hartway, and Rowan Grant. And then Rowan Grant also received first-team for 100 breaststroke. Second-team was Bryn Maggelson with a dive, Sabrina Cody 500 free, and October Sealing with 100 backstroke. Congratulations, ladies. And then finally, last but not least, we have our football team. And this is a long list. So for first-team, we had Eli Nugent on offense, Jake Owens offense, Carl Watson on offense, Mason Davis offense and special teams, Aaron Clifton offense, Logan Manson offense, Brennan Shepard defense, Spencer Morris on defense, Ireland Guthrie defense, and Zane Osborne on defense. Second-team, we had Brennan Shepard for offense, Tyler Lynch for defense, and Carl Watson for defense. So again, just a huge congratulations to every single one of our student athletes, and especially those who received all-league honors for all of their hard work. Last, I just want to, because this is our last board meeting of the year. So I want to make sure that I wish everyone a happy holidays, happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you again to the committee who brought us all of that information on the six versus eight-period day. That was so much work, so much work, and I appreciate all of the input. And I appreciate that everyone is focused on supporting all students, because that's what it's all about. And I just wanted to give a nice little shout-out to Ms. Holly, the best amazing executive assistant ever, who just treats us so well and always makes us look so much better than we actually are, and equips us, especially James. But, and equips, equips us with all of the things that we need. But I really appreciate you. Thank you so much. I talked about appreciation. I just want to let you know that you are so appreciated, and you do great work. And this doesn't look as great as this does without you here. So thank you. Okay, and it is 6:13 PM, and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.